All right, welcome back from the break. We will go on to our next item, our 6.6 update on 2022 drought conditions of Clear Lake. And with that, we have Deputy Director Marina Delajanas here, and she will give the presentation.
Hi, good morning Board of Supervisors. Marina Delajanas, Deputy Water Resources Director. I am joined by some of my colleagues and mentors, some of us in the audience, and some folks joining us via Zoomed. I am joined today with Director of Public Works and Water Resources, Scott DeLeon; Director of Special Districts, Scott Harder; Director of Public Services, Lars Ewing; Director of Environmental Health, Craig Weatherby; and we also have some friends from OES, Sheriff Martin on the call, and Leah Sattlet as well, OES manager. We are excited to bring to you this morning our update on 2022 drought conditions. Yes, we are still in a drought, unfortunately, and we are here to provide an update to you all. So with that being said, I know that I can talk about this all day. Unfortunately, we do not have all day to talk about drought conditions and where we're at and next steps. So I have highlighted some talking points that we'll be showcasing today, including current and historical drought conditions, current and predicted Clear Lake lake levels, groundwater conditions, Clear Lake water quality, including drinking water as well, county facilities, water conservation efforts. I will be providing an update on our drought workgroups that we have in the county, and then, of course, next steps. So with that being said, I have this graph here with all sorts of pretty colors. And what this graph is, I grabbed it from the U.S. Drought Monitor. This drought is, or this graph is a living product drought product, or living product drought map here. And what you can see is the levels on the northern part of the graph. Those outline drought conditions dating back from the 1900s all the way to 2017. This is when the last available data was collected. Again, the U.S. Drought Monitor does a great job of collecting this data, and these are, these data is collected from tree rings. And what they do is they blend tree ring reconstruction on instruments data to estimate average, the Palmer Modified Drought Index, a lot of big words, just indicating that this is a collection of data to develop the average of drought conditions. So on the northern part of the graph, as mentioned, this is outlining abnormally dry to exceptionally dry, with abnormally dry here indicating yellow to exceptionally dry in the darker red and the maroon color. Now, on the lower portion of this graph you have here, this indicates precipitation, again, ranging from abnormally wet to exceptionally wet. And what this, what this graph shows us is, again, this is not the first drought that we've experienced, nor will it be the last drought. But you can get an idea of the precipitation conditions that we've had since the 1900s. Again, we are comparing these drought to 1977, which you can see here on the graph. Moving forward to current drought conditions, statewide, again, the Western U.S., we are all experiencing drought conditions. Unfortunately, we have been for the past few years. We are in, well into our third consecutive dry year. Average 37.2 million people in California are affected by the drought, with 116 counties with USDA disaster designations. So as you can see on the right-hand side, this was collected as of yesterday, and this shows where at in the state is exceptionally, what kind of, is experiencing what kind of drought, from abnormally dry, which is 100% of the state, to exceptional drought, which is mostly focused here in the Central Valley. Here in Lake County, we are experiencing 100% of Lake County environments and communities are experiencing severe drought. And what this means is that grazing lands can be inadequate. Fire season is longer with burn intensity, dry fuels, and large fire spatial extent, which we are well familiar with, unfortunately. And trees can oftentimes be stressed, plants increase reproductive mechanisms, and wildlife diseases can increase. Now, 7.5% of Lake County environments and communities are experiencing extreme drought conditions, and this is focused more on the eastern side of the county. Now, what this means is that livestock needs expensive supplemental feed, cattle and horses are oftentimes sold, little pasture remains, fruit trees bud early, and producers begin irrigating in the winter. Also, fire season lasts year-round, with fires occurring in typically wet parts of the state, and burn bans can be implemented. Of course, water is inadequate for agriculture, wildlife, and urban needs. Reservoirs are extremely low, and hydropower is restricted. Again, only 7.5% of Lake County, based off of the data collected by the drought monitor system, is experiencing extreme drought, but the majority of the county, again, we are experiencing our severe drought conditions. Now, this graph here I have on the left, this is, again, collected by drought.gov. This is an awesome resource that we have available on the Water Resources website, where they collect real-time data and all sorts of data as it relates to drought conditions, not only for our county, but for the Western U.S. as well. This graph indicates real-time stream flow conditions. This graph was also collected last year, and these are graphs, these are stream gauges collected by the U.S. Geological Survey. And what this map outlines is it compares stream flow conditions compared to historical conditions. So the map depicts stream flow conditions as computed at USGS stream gauges, and the color represents real-time stream flow compared to percentages of historical daily stream flow, stream flow for the day of the year. I have outlined the color of these stream flows, and I will go through each stream flow gauge that they have. So here on the upper right-hand side, we have Cache Creek Stream Flow at Clear Lake Oaks, and that is experiencing normal stream flow as of yesterday. Cache Creek at Clear Lake Oaks and Kelsey Creek at Kelseyville are experiencing below normal stream flow conditions. And then in the southern portion of the county, we have Cache Creek in Lower Lake and Poota Creek at Guanac are experiencing much below normal. Again, all this information, including the stream flow conditions, can be found on our Water Resources website, and this was data collected as of yesterday. Now, here, we will shuffle on over to the current and predicted Clear Lake lake levels. Folks have seen this before during previous drought updates, and we also have this map that is updated on a bi-weekly basis on the Water Resources website. So here, you can see, the brown line right here indicates the 2022 stage. So as of July 31st, we were at negative 1.6 RUMZI. Today, of August 9th, we were at negative 1.36 RUMZI. Last year, on this day, we were at negative 1.6 RUMZI. And here, we also have predicted lake levels. I don't want folks to get super hunkered down on the predictions. Again, these are just based off of our models. And then we have the comparisons from 1977, and then also 2014 drought years here.
Which color?
Yes.
Was, was last year?
So last year, stage 2021 is this yellow. Yep. And then we have 2014, which is the gray, and then 1977 is the blue dotted line.
I just wanted to make sure, because from what I've been reading, we are lower this year than we were last year, but I heard you say negative 1.3, and last year we were at negative 1.6. Did I misunderstand?
So just to confirm, July 31st, we were at negative 1.16.
1.6, gotcha.
Yep. And then today, we are at negative 1.36.
Thank you.
Yep. So as we know, these low lake levels impact our accessibility to the lake, as folks are well aware. And this is just an update of the current public boat ramps. I will let Director Ewing later in the presentation give an update of the boat ramps here. But here, we have the public boat ramps that are open and the ones that are closed. Again, this resource is available on the Water Resources website. We have a new drought hub that we are working on right now. If you go to the Water Resources website, it's on the far right-hand side. It says under construction, because we are working on it, but all this information will be on the website by the end of the week. So going back to this graph, right now, the ramps that are closed is Third Street at Lakeport, Lakeside Park, Lucerne Harbor, Keeling Park, and Rodman Slough. Again, this graphic is one that folks have seen before, and these are based off of the depth at the end of the boat ramps, which we have done the, on the boots ground, measurements of measuring where the ramp ends and the measurement method that we conducted to get such measurement.
I have a question on that, if you can go back. How can we have a ramp open if the depth at the end of the ramp is zero feet? People just go further into the lake bed with their trailer, or?
I'm gonna let Lars.
Sorry, should I keep my questions till the end?
So Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, and I can talk to a lot of this. First off, Lakeside Park, while it does show closed, there are two boat ramps there. One is closed, one is open. And now they're all closed. So.
Oh, nice. That is beautiful, nice.
There we go. So a lot of, so coming back to this, the depth at the end of the boat ramp, there's a lot more to it than simply the depth. A lot of these boat ramps have rocks that might cause some impacts there. Some have sandbars that impact it more than the boat ramp itself. So if a boat ramp, or if really the lake bed is deeper beyond the end of the boat ramp, then that could be accessible. So each, each one is, is a lot more, there's a lot more to factor in than simply the depth.
And just as a quick aside question, that's the depth of the cement boat ramp, where the further back you go, the more potential there is for a truck to get stuck, a trailer to, things like that?
That was my understanding of when I believe Water Resources did these dips, and, yep. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, perfect. And this is why we have the experts here joining us. Thank you, thank you, Director Ewing. So here, I just want to highlight a little bit of the groundwater conditions and drywells. And if Director Weatherby is on, I will let him elaborate near the end of the presentations on well permitting as it relates to the current drought. So again, this is a map grabbed this morning from the California Department of Water Resources, Drywell Reporting. As you can see, it shows where these drywells are reported, and I would just like to note that this is volunteer-based. There is no ground truthing verification on this database. What the county is in the process of doing is having our own internal database of when these wells are reported. Folks can either call Environmental Health or us at Water Resources if they have drywells reported. And what we do is we collect that information, and we are in the process of compiling our own database and doing the fact-truthing as well, to make sure that we have the most accurate data available and have a proper understanding of the wells reported. So again, there have no been drywells reported in the last 30 days. We are still at 30 wells reported in the California Department of Water Resources Portal, drywells. We have the majority of these ending in the, being placed in the South County, and a few of them right outside and within our Big Valley groundwater basin. Moving over to Clear Lake water quality, I don't want to elaborate too much on this, but my focus for this part of the presentation is just highlighting that not only does drought impact our water quantity, but it impacts our water quality, which I know folks are well aware of. So here, I just have a snippet of this real-time map that is available on the Water Resources website. This is actually a real-time stream flow wind map. I don't have the map loaded here, because it takes a long time to load, but it's really cool to show where the wind is moving on the lake in that real time. And as you can see right now, the majority of the wind is pushing down to the South County in the lower portion of the arms, which is not uncommon. And we know, we are all well aware of the bloom that is happening right now in the Oaks arm. How drought can impact our water quality is, of course, our lake, even though it is a very large lake, it is very, very shallow. So as we have our lake lowering in terms of water level, that is the perfect habitat for our already eutrophic lake, meaning very nutrient-rich lake, to provide habitat for our aquatic plant friends, including cyanobacteria, who is not necessarily our friend. The figure here on the right is the HAB Incident Report Map, which is sourced from the California Water Quality Monitoring Council. And this just indicates different HAB, HAB sites, which is harmful agu blooms, that are identified in our lake. A lot of this data is collected by our friends from Big Valley Rancheria, who also have a really awesome website, and they do really good communications and updates with the community in terms of these blooms, and they work very collaborative with our department and other departments, including Public Health and Environmental Health, Special Districts, when these blooms are created. Now, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Scott Harder, Director of Special Districts, to talk about drought and our drinking water.
Yes, thank you, Marina. I can get into the details for our five water systems, but it's important to note that there are roughly 70 water systems, public water systems within the county that are substantial in size, not including small stuff like the little coffee kiosk down at the end of Lakeport and what have you. And it's important that if customers or constituents out in the county have questions about their drinking water quality, they reach out directly to their drinking water provider. You know, some of the things that we're all dealing with are water quality due to the low lake levels. The drought has impacted some water systems' well levels, so you're seeing various impacts depending on the water system itself. And we're all reacting in appropriate but different manners to address the drought as it's affecting each of us. Specifically for the special districts-managed water systems, we've got five around the county. Two of them are surface water treatment plants on Clear Lake. One is a surface water treatment plant up in Spring Valley, and the other two are well-based systems. So for our well-based systems, there's almost no impact at all. The well levels have been stable. There's no impact to quality or quantity of the water. And Kelseyville and Conota are two well-based systems are operating pretty well often. Spring Valley is a surface water treatment plant. It's out, draws its water from Cache Creek. There's a gathering in Cache Creek, which gets the water from Indian Valley Reservoir. There's no current impacts on the water quality or the water quantity, but we are monitoring Indian Valley Reservoir and keeping in touch with Yolo County to, you know, keep an eye on what those projections look like and adapt. Spring Valley, we were also awarded almost $1 million, $880,000 for a grant project to develop some source redundancy. So that project is in the environmental review stage currently, and we are seeking to look at the option of possibly a well out there to provide redundant water source in case Indian Valley Reservoir is, you know, less than, less than available, if it's not available for the full quantity. Soda Bay Water System is over on the south side of Clear Lake there. We're seeing very minimal impacts there due to the drought. The water quality has degraded. It's requiring slightly more chemicals, floculins to help with filtering, and chlorine to help with disinfection before it goes out into the system. And the plant runtimes are up just a hair, but that's typical in the summertime. People typically irrigate. Even in spite of the drought, people typically irrigate through the summer, so we're seeing slightly increased demand out in Soda Bay and slightly increased chemical usage, but not too significant at all. North Lakeport, we are seeing significant impacts due to the drought. The intake at that water system was at minus 3 RUMZI until last summer, and then we were able to complete a project to lower the intake level down to minus 5.5 RUMZI. But with the lake at minus 1.36, this morning, there's only four feet of water above where our water intake is there. So when we pull the water in, we're pulling a lot of surface-influenced water, so the water quality is pretty poor. We're seeing significant increase in our chemicals, our floculent, and chlorine use to produce that drinking water, and we're seeing increased plant runtimes. At North Lakeport, we were also awarded a DWR grant, a drought relief grant, for $1.5 million. It's a project that's two-pronged. We're looking at potentially extending the lake intake so we can gather some additional depth over where that pulls in at, and explore the possibility of a well out there as well as a redundant water source. So that's kind of the status of where drinking water is on the lake. We do have a drinking water group. It's kind of an ad hoc group of some of the water systems that meet on a fairly regular basis to discuss, you know, plans and methods to deal with the drought and what we're seeing, what we're experiencing, what's working, what's not working. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to move on over to county facilities and water use, and I'm going to bring up Director Ewing to elaborate.
All right, well, thank you again. So we breezed through these slides a bit, and that's all there is. It's one slide, and I wanted to talk to each of these. First off, there's, there's two images. Both of those pictures were taken on Friday, and both are county parks. One, obviously, is green, and one is brown. And it's, and it's just to depict that during the time of droughts, there are, the public are going to see different landscapes at different parks. You heard Scott Harder talk about the different water districts around the county. And that, these parks are all irrigated by either different water districts or pulling water from the lake. So each one is uniquely different, and each district has different triggers where irrigation may be, need to be reduced, and different levels. So the point is that as we progress through the drought, one of the impacts that the public is going to see at parks is a, you know, some browning. And it may be that one park right down the road is green and another park is brown, and that might help to understand why. So whether it's a difference in the water districts thresholds for when we reduce irrigation, or in the case of some parks that are on the lake, we have water intakes that Scott Harder mentioned earlier. We have some that are on piers or out on breakwaters, and those are typically just for irrigation on, on that one park. So extending that, or, or, you know, dropping it to a lower level is certainly not cost-effective when it, when it's, we're talking about just irrigation at a park as opposed to an entire water district. So there are some other impacts there aside from, from just, from just a water district. It could be that we pull from the lake. So the other points on here, one is conserving water. Let's, let's break it back down to grounds here. A few things that we can do, and I want to encourage the public to do, and that is, you know, just very simple things that many people already know about, and that is, one, to cut the grass high. If you cut it low, it stresses it, it requires more water, it exposes the soil below. Water earlier in the day prevents evaporation. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out here is that sign, conserve water. So as we reduce water, obviously, there's going to be a browning of the landscaping. And by doing that intentionally and putting a sign out to show that this is intentional, it gets the word out there, and it passes the message along. Now, that is probably a good segue back to the previous agenda item, that I apologize I wasn't here, but I got the gist of it. And that's, you know, that is something that we can look at doing here. I did get an opportunity to talk to the facility superintendent, and the irrigation out here is actually, in his terms, relatively low, very low. That's, that's not a, it's not a hard and fast number, so I can't tell you that it's a, you know, it's a, it's a water-free environment, but it is certainly minimal, but that's something that we will, we will take a look at. I want to transition a bit, talk about facilities. The last slide, well, not slide, but that last image there, water conservation in a building. So take this building, for example. Some different measures that we have taken over, over the years. Fossits, putting in low-flow faucets, aerators, and infrared sensors, so they only, you only get the water when you're actually there. Toilets, putting in low-flow toilets, within reason, there still needs to be some flow. So certainly in an older facility that has certain plumbing issues, yes, we do need that, that water to continue. Putting in waterless urinals and simple things like putting in bottle filling stations. So, so there are certainly some measures that we take, and there are others that we can continue to take. But, but what I want to encourage is the facilities, the county facilities, so those, those occupants, as you identify, you know, a desire to reduce the landscaping at your, or watering in the landscaping at your, at your building, feel free, contact Public Services, we can coordinate with you there, and then the public at large to, to look at measures to conserve on both your buildings and your grounds. So just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Ewing. And I know that other county facilities, including the Sheriff's Office as well, have taken measures to do water conservation, and we'll let them elaborate a little bit near the end of the presentation on that. Just kidding, we have Sheriff Martin on the call right now. I'm going to let him hop back on if he wishes. There he goes.
I am on. Thank you, Deputy Director Delajanas. A side note, Marina is a, very much a pleasure to work with. She's very knowledgeable, very excited about the work she does, and I just want to take the time to thank her for putting this presentation together. I simply want to echo what was said on a previous agenda item by Director Metcalf about experiencing these droughts as well. At the Sheriff's Office, we discontinued any landscape watering that we have around our jail facility, as well as our main administrative office. It looks horrible, but I think people understand, and by setting that example and doing what we're asking other people to do, I think is probably one of the best ways that we can contribute to the, the effects of the drought. Happy to answer any other questions, but I just want to chime in with those, those steps that we're taking at OES.
Thank you so much, Sheriff Martin. So next steps, there's a lot of information here. Again, you're going to continue to hear from this group, and we are going to make sure that we do an adequate job in providing routine updates as it relates to the drought. But I highlighted our next steps into three different sections. So we have the drought task force, which has not been forgotten. The next steps for that is, again, we are in the process of setting up reoccurring meeting schedules. As we get going with this drought task force formed by the Board of Supervisors, I would like us to meet at least on a monthly basis, ideally on a bi-weekly basis as we get things going, because we'll be bringing to the Board of Supervisors our draft charter document. With that, we are also, again, the objective of that drought task force is to prepare a drought mitigation plan. I sit on the state drought task force, and they are planning on preparing the guidebook that they have been working on for counties such as ours, who will be developing a drought mitigation plan. That guidebook, we will be having ready ideally by October, November, so that is going to provide us the guidance that we need at the local level to ensure that we are following compliance, again, with SB 552 and other ordinances in terms of the drought and water conservation measures. Now, we have highlighted a few projects that we will be working on, and some of these include the Lucerne Harbor dredging project, which I will let Director Ewing elaborate a little bit on, and then also our boat ramp extension, which I will let Director Scott DeLeon elaborate on. Again, both projects we are moving forward with, they're in different stages of the project development. Special Districts, as Scott mentioned, is working on different drinking water projects, whether it be water availability studies or extension of water intakes. And then, of course, in general, we are continuing to seek funding for water resiliency projects. I had a great conversation with friends from Community Development Department and Environmental Health to pursue other funding opportunities that are currently out there for drought mitigation, water conservation, et cetera. In general, water conservation efforts, this is where we at the county are working on prioritizing. I had a great meeting with Sheriff Martin, Lieutenant Wells, and Leah in OES. That's going to be our biggest effort moving forward. As Director Ewing mentioned, they have been doing some outreach as well, and just getting the word out there that we need to be water-wise year-round. So looking at ways that we can be creative and getting the messaging out there, providing resources and materials for folks to make sure that they are being as water-wise as possible. And again, these resources are going to be on the Water Resources Lake County Drought Portal, which you can find by Googling Lake County Water Resources going on the website, and you'll see on the farther right-hand bar of the website is the drought portal. So again, here are just some additional resources, again, all on the Water Resources website. We have here on the left is the California Department of Water Resources, my drywell reporting. We have groundwater well monitoring interest form here at the county level. If you are interested in having your groundwater well monitored, you can submit this form. If you need assistance in submitting this form, just call us at Water Resources, that's We can do an assessment to see if we can add your well in our countywide monitoring system. We also have forms from the Rural Counties Association of Household Water Well System Loan Program. And again, the resource that I use to collect a lot of this data, which is drought.gov, they update it on a daily basis, and it just provides an accurate hub of where we can get different drought information as it relates not only to our county, but the Western U.S. in general. Before I take any questions and invite my colleagues to provide any, any other information that I may have missed, you can get more information as it relates to the drought by visiting the California Department of Water Resources, the California Water Boards, and then us here at the Lake County Water Resources Department. Visit us on the third floor of the courthouse. And with that being said, I'm going to invite my colleagues to elaborate on anything, and I see Director Ewing coming up.
Well, as Marina mentioned, the Lucerne Harbor dredging project, just as a brief update here, we are, we're in the environmental studies phase, I think is a simple way to put it. There, there were environmental resources that were identified during the initial investigation stage, so we're extending that to what's called an extended Phase 1, and that's, that's the, the status of where we are. There's, I didn't bring with me a whole lot of the, the depth, and to be honest, there's, there's information there that is sensitive in nature, so it's, it's not something that we can share to the public at large. But had, I've given presentations to the Lucerne Area Town Hall. Supervisor Crandall has been involved with that, so, so I know he's, he's well aware of that, and we're in coordination with the tribes to, to do a lot of that work. They've already been involved and will continue to be involved. As far as the actual design of the project, it's, it's not overly complicated. So the, the plans are essentially complete, with the exception of any mitigation requirements that we may have that result from, from those environmental studies. But that, that gives you a, a brief update on where we are with that project.
Just a quick budgeting question. I know we budgeted for the Lucerne Harbor project. Is that funding still there, or do we, does it need to be reapproved? Is that funding still there or does it need to be reapproved? And is it going away slowly because of the length of time that it's taken to get to this part?
Sure. So the funding is still there, it's in a capital budget and we still have that. What happens with a project like this or projects is, as time goes on, obviously, the buying power of a dollar decreases. So there's certainly that issue. When we complete the environmental stage is a point where we need to say, all right, now we know what the mitigation requirements are going to be. So what is the cost of that project? Basically do a revised cost estimate. At this point, you know, it would, it seems reasonable that the money that we have would be sufficient, in large part because if the water is low, then the dewatering that would be required of the project would be a cost savings there. So I don't have an answer for you about whether the money that we have is sufficient to fund the project, but I can tell you that the money that we have budgeted for the project is still there and unless Susan takes it away, which wouldn't be her, but it would be the board, so it is still there and I'm counting on that.
And I was mainly asking on all the work that's been done, it doesn't sound like that's taken away from the 250 that we set aside.
Not significantly, no. But with, as those environmental studies progress, if there's the need to continue that, then it certainly can tap into that and chip away at it. Let's just put it that way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Scott DeLeon, Public Works Water Resources. I'll just give a brief update on the ramp extension project. I know there's a lot of interest in that. The project that we originally proposed was pretty ambitious. It included extending the ramps as well as dredging channels out into the deeper sections of the lake. And we too are kind of stuck in environmental and getting environmental and clearances and permits. We are looking at a scaled back version of that project. Marina showed the graph of the predicted lake levels. We're a little bit below where we were last year, but not significantly. We were able to keep some ramps open, but they were challenging because they had drop-offs at the end. So we're looking at reducing the scale a little bit of this project and eliminating those drop-offs, extending them a little bit so that people can still get their boats in the water, but they're, we're probably not going, at least this year, going to be able to do the dredging that we had hoped to do, with the hopes that folks will be able to get their boats out into the deeper water and be able to use the lake.
A quick question. I know that in speaking with Sheriff Martin last year, when the water was this low, that it may not have been a daily occurrence, but it was quite often that his marine patrol had to go out to help boats that got entangled in trees, weeds, whatever else was out there. Do we have the appropriate signage to warn people? Because if we're going to have the ramp that goes even deeper than the status that we were in last year, that means there might be more boats that are attempting to get in, but also creating more potential problems.
Yeah, that signage will be a part of that. Yep, for sure. And we have ramp monitors at all of our public ramps and they are doing a fantastic job of communicating with boaters and warning them. So we're doing that personally. Yep.
And I just wanted to, I'm trying to find it right now, but you said 250,000. I wanted to make sure, I think it was 350,000 from the last time.
I went from the top of my head, so you could be absolutely correct.
350, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Lars.
I don't mean to be glib, I just, I don't recall exactly, but 350 does sound wonderful and I honestly think it is 350.
That sounds wonderful.
No, I don't want to, yeah. So, all right. Marina?
If I don't have any other of my colleagues adding information, three, two, one. All right, I will look over to the board. If you have any questions, we're happy to take those now.
Supervisor Smati?
I'm wondering if you can speak about what you've been hearing, I know what I've been hearing, but I think it's better coming from Water Resources about the anticipation of what to look for in the following year. I know it's not set in stone, but I keep hearing it again and again and again, and I think that we just need to be prepared and not keep wishing and hoping that something is going to change drastically.
Yes, so great question. Unfortunately, I left my crystal ball in the shop. It's still getting worked on, but we are anticipating another dry year. And that is just based off of conversations that I have with the state on a routine basis and their studies and predictions. Again, I can't predict the future, but it's better to prepare for a dry year than to cross our fingers and hope that we get a lot of rain. So I'm always going to encourage that we just be water-wise year-round and anticipate that, again, this is not the last drought, even if we do go into another dry year or even if we do get, you know, an awesome amount of rain, we still need to prepare for, you know, future droughts and be water-wise, be as water-wise as possible when it comes to utilizing our earth's natural resources.
And that's what I keep hearing in my state meetings as well. There's the belief that we're going to get another La Niña type of situation, very dry year. So we should anticipate to be somewhat in the same position, possibly worse, but not necessarily out of a drought situation like we've been hoping for. I know that in my area, you spoke about Clear Lake Oaks and the algae. Austin Beach Red Bud Park is just filled to the brim with algae. It's very unfortunate. I know there's been a lot of attempts, I've been speaking with Director DeLeon over the course of many decades to try and deal with the algae. Unfortunately, not much has come to the positive results that everyone is looking for. I am looking and researching to see if there's anything new out there. There's some stuff that could work, but also is concerning. Does it impact other issues? Because we don't want to create a problem by solving a problem. So for example, they have a sonar machine that supposedly breaks down the algae. What does that do to our ecosystem by using a sonar machine? So there's, it's not very cut and dry as to what needs to be done, but knowing that next year most likely will be a repeat, I'm not giving up to trying something different. I know the city of Clear Lake is using an air curtain. I've talked to people before who have tried an air curtain and not necessarily has worked. Granted, a typical year, we're still going to see algae and at that point, we might see that that has positive effects. This is a pretty extreme situation that we're dealing with. I also know, and maybe Director Harder can respond to this, I know a lot of people are getting letters in their mail about conserving water from their water districts. There are some that are saying that they're in Stage Two based on the governor's executive orders and that potential fines or fees, additional fees will come along. And I'll just give my personal opinion to that. It's hard to conserve more when you've been conserving for the last 10 years because you've been dealing with drought again and again and again. And to ask to have a 20% reduction from where we were in 2020, I got rid of every piece of lawn that I got with my property when I purchased my property. How much more can I do to conserve? How much more can others do? When I see that, just like our last conversation, we don't see the landscaping or things like that. People are already cutting back as much as they can. So I hope that our water companies are taking a good look at who are the high utilizers of water versus just somebody who hasn't been able to reduce because they can't. So I think that overall, when we compare ourselves to other counties, especially in Southern California, we're doing a fantastic job. In fact, there is a state report that shows that Northern California has reduced yet again 15%, and yet Southern California has increased by about 5 to 7%. So I think that's one of those difficult situations that we're in, is that we're being asked to do more when we've kind of gotten used to doing that on a regular basis already. But I'm wondering if Director Harder might speak to the fact that has those types of letters gone out to special district customers and what is expected of customers at this point?
At this point, we're still in a voluntary conservation stage for all of our water systems. We are not requiring more. As you pointed out, it's difficult to cut back more over 2020, which was a dry year already when we're seeing already significant conservation. So, yeah, there seems to be a double standard between Northern California and Southern California, but on a large scale, there's nothing we as a small water system can do about that. But, yeah, we're not seeing abuse, at least in our area. As you've noted, most of the customers in Lake County are used to living and having that conservation lifestyle. They've reduced their usage already. So cutting more on top of that is sometimes challenging. So painting with a broad brush is not our approach. We look to find if there is abuse and then deal with that on a specific basis.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Piska?
I think it's always important to plan like it's not going to rain and that just needs to be our standard moving forward. But I'm wondering about the creek levels and the property owners that draw from the creek and some have riparian rights and some don't. And are there any ways to kind of educate? Like, I know in Cobb, a lot of people pull from Kelsey Creek, they don't see what happens to Kelsey Creek in Kelseyville. And so is there any messaging or anything we could do to kind of reach out to those property owners and just say, hey, just want to let you know, like, we should be reducing if possible? Because it's, you know, up at the top, you don't see the levels low and so it doesn't compute sometime. And I'm hearing that from my constituents.
Yeah, and that's a great question. And, you know, as I focused, as I mentioned, our biggest focus moving forward is going to be this outreach and education. And a lot of that is getting this readily available data, readily available, right? And not just via electronically, but also making efforts of going out in the field, having these conversations with these, you know, parcel owners or folks that draw directly from the creeks and giving them the resource and the information that they have to make sure that they're doing their part and that they have the information or any questions that we may be able to answer. It was actually two weeks ago, I was out in the field with the State Water Resource Control Board and that was one of our focuses on how can we do this outreach and engagement and get these folks this information? And I know previously in terms of our groundwater program, we've done a lot of open houses. So that's, you know, one approach that we're looking at entertaining, creating specific outreach, you know, outreach flyers for, you know, domestic well owners or people that, you know, are able to draw from the creek or what have you not. So that's going to be one of my biggest focuses is, you know, actually getting out in the field, you know, having these conversations face-to-face with folks and then also giving them the information that they need. So catering our messaging, not just a generic conserve water, but how does it relate to these different communities and these folks that we have that reside in the county?
So then I have to follow up with where can someone submit a complaint?
Yeah, so you can always give us a call at Water Resources, whether it be a complaint on water rights, illegal water hauling, dry well, you know, wells going dry. We will be able to point them in the right direction. If they still have questions after that, we can always submit that complaint as well. So I always let folks know, give us a call at Water Resources. We're your go-to in terms of, you know, our Water Resources, not necessarily drinking water and wastewater. That's our friends at Special Districts. But if you have any questions or concerns, give us a call at 707-263-2344 and we can give you that information you need and point you in the right direction.
And then those parcels that do have the riparian rights, that's easily?
Yeah, so that would be a state water board. Water board does all the water rights. Again, we're in close communications with them. So we've had folks, especially the past few months, who have given us a call, question on water rights, we're able to point them in the proper direction and even give them a contact who they can call and follow up with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Vice Chair Smati?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Director Weatherby to speak on, I know he had an executive order he needed to follow on denying new wells or specific types of wells. Just kind of curious how that's going, how many new wells have been drilled and permitted? Just to kind of see what the situation is that he's dealing with from that perspective?
Let me see if he's on, let me see. I see his hand up, he just needs to be unmuted.
Sorry about that, I was just waiting for access granting. So yes, we did have the executive order that came through and we do have that sorted out now. For folks who are doing repairs on existing wells, that should not be a concern at all, especially dry wells, if you want to go deeper, we can now get that, get those permits turned around fairly quickly. For new wells, domestic use only, for residents, businesses that use water incidentally to their operations, those wells can be drilled with just a statement of fact that the well is going to be used for such domestic purposes. Ag wells do, ag and industrial wells do have a little bit more of a burden, a hill to climb for them. They will have to have that engineering report stating that their wells will not cause a subsidence or are likely to interfere with the well of a neighboring property. So, but we are moving forward with wells, we are issuing well permits and there is no stoppage of well permits in Lake County at this time. A little confusion on that amongst some folks.
And are you seeing an increase in permits or decrease in permits?
Probably a slight decrease in permits. Over last year, we have seen fewer ag wells being applied for, but domestic well soon to be holding steady.
Okay. And then my last question for you is, when you kind of closed the door on something that was allowed yesterday, people tend to still want to do it. Are you getting complaints of illegal well drilling?
Actually, no, we really haven't received many complaints of illegal well drilling. It seems like, actually, there's been a pretty small downtick in wells as related to certain products, just because the market has started a little bit. So they're just not building as many wells right now.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to, unless you have anything else to add or?
No.
Open it up to public comments. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? Seven point, sorry, no, six point six. No, and so I see on Zoom, we have Betsy Khan. Betsy, I see your hands up. If you'd like to unmute, state your name for the record and we'll start in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Betsy Khan, the Essential Public Information Center. I have three or four comments that are related to different parts of the presentation. The first one has to do with the statement in Mr. Harder's report about the drought and drinking water systems, specifically in regard to the North Lakeport Water System there, CSA 20, I believe, or 21. I wonder if you're aware of the exploratory wells that were drilled by Waterworks Engineering in 2007 regarding the expansion of that particular plant for a large number of proposed developments in that area? Because that was a really very conflicting report and there were subsequent attempts to, you know, connect that up to the Upper Lake County Water District and, you know, so there's some really serious issues around that, around that expansion, if that's what is happening. The second comment I have is about the museum greens, the beautiful, huge trees there, the heritage trees. Because there is irrigation done there, maybe some signage explaining why that is provided and it's an extraordinary use of the water for that lawn, maybe that would be helpful because that's a really important place to continue irrigating. The third one is, in the discussion about all of these conservation efforts, as in examples were the next steps presented by Ms. Delia Giannis, not one mentioned fire suppression flows or prioritizing the expansion of storage facilities or maintaining certain critical levels of supplies in relation to the measurement of available water. I'm really concerned about that and I think the Risk Reduction Authority ought to be concerned about that. The last one has to do with the Lucerne Harbor. Really did not understand what Mr. Ewing was saying about the, who's doing the EIR, the environmental report, where it is and what is it going to take to expedite that while we do have these low-level, low lake level conditions conducive to actually expediting that project? So if there's any way I can get that information, that would be great, but thank you for this. There are some, those are my concerns. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else on Zoom with their hand up. Didn't know if, did you want to just reach out to them, Lars, or did you want to just answer?
Sure, I can respond to two of those. The trees, I think that's a very good point. Oftentimes, you see greenery on the ground, the lawn, but the trees are really the need for that. One example, at Lucerne Harbor, there's a, some redwood groves, or a redwood grove that's there, that the community has really pointed out that, you know, those trees are brown. Well, those are coastal redwoods. It's, they're not It's, they're not in a coastal region, and so it's very common that those trees have that. I'm not speaking from my expertise, which is minimal. I'm speaking from the arborist that we've hired to assess those trees. For those trees specifically, we're taking some extra steps because the water that we draw from the lake is now, that pump, the intake, is out of the lake now. And so we're bringing in a tank specifically to water those trees, actually in coordination with Cal Water, who will be providing the water for that tank. So that was, that just happened this morning. So that's information that may be new to include the supervisor there. I think he might have known that that was in the works. But I bring that up because, yes, those trees, those trees in particular, they were planted as a POW and MIA memorial, and so we want to make sure that certain trees get certain attention. Coming back to Lucerne Harbor dredging, Betsy, I think maybe if we have a conversation, I could clear that up. We're not at an EIR stage. We're doing the studies necessary to complete an initial study. We have an archaeologist who is doing the necessary cultural and historical artifact research at this point. So, Betsy, I'll contact you later, Chair, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Lars. Thank you very much. I see Scott Harder, if you'd like to unmute and?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Yes, to address Betsy's question or concerns about the North Lakeport, previous 2007 studies that were done. We do have those. We're aware of those. The developments, I believe, were Robin Hill, and then there was another one on the west side of the highway out of North Lakeport there. But, so we're not looking in those areas, so we're certainly not looking to replicate or duplicate the controversy that was around those projects.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other hands up for Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, actually, I do. Joan, if you'd like to come up and state your name for the record before you get into your question, we'll give you three minutes.
I do have a question. I want to know if, when the monitoring is being done by the county, are you communicating with the EPA, who is in charge of the toxic waste site at Sulfur Bank? And is there a connection? I've read on the internet that there is a connection between cyanobacteria and methyl mercury. I want to know if you test for methyl mercury, or if the federal government has been testing, as they said in their last public hearing, with the USGS researching methyl mercury. I believe it's connected with cyanobacteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you?
So just to answer a few of those questions, Joan, so in terms of our monitoring, just to be specific, for our groundwater monitoring that we do at the County of Water Resources, we have biannual well runs. We go in the spring and fall, where we monitor all the groundwater wells that we have around the county, and we coordinate very closely with the California Department of Water Resources, who also does biannual well monitoring for our groundwater basins. Now, for our SIGMA, our Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, priority basin, we do monthly groundwater monitoring, which we go out once a month, usually early in the month, where we do groundwater monitoring. All this data is readily available. You can find a lot of this data on the California Department of Water Resources portal, or contact us at Water Resources, Lake County, to get that information. Now, the Superfund Site, again, that is coordinated by the EPA. We have brought them previously to do a presentation a few months ago on the update of the Superfund Site. And I know there's interest on their end to provide another update, so that's something that I'm more than happy to work with, to sponsor, to bring that update, and then provide, hopefully, more guidance for Mrs. Moss on her questions regarding that.
There'll also be another update at the East Region Town Hall on September 6th, or 8th, I think, on the Wednesday for their next meeting, so. Yeah, okay. I don't see any other hands up, so I will bring this back to the board. Any other questions or comments before we wrap this up? Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on something that Ms. Khan brought up, and that's the addition of storage. And I know that our water districts have been attempting to do so, just like we were talking about earlier, and we approved, was that last week or two weeks ago, for the addition of a well in the North Lakeport area. Everyone is trying to figure out what to do. I know that's why Lakeport has its well, and not just getting it from the lake, is to have that extra support, the redundancy that Director Harder was talking about. But the one thing that I can think of is, it's difficult to create new storage, just in the state of California, let alone in the County of Lake, where even though it's a creek that goes into the lake, you still have to go through the layers of Yolo County flood control. And so that makes it that much more difficult. In my opinion, the Middle Creek Restoration Project is a storage project that would add thousands of acre-feet of water, which is, again, why that project is so important. It's water quality, it's flood control, and it's extra water storage added to our lake to bring back those historical flows. So I just wanted to bring that, kind of cover that topic, since she brought it up, and it's a great comment. We need more storage, but getting storage around in our creek beds and stuff like that is, you're not going to be able to create the storage that we need. I do know that there was conversation with, that was brought to this board because of the drought a year or two ago with Director Weatherby, that right now, we do not have any setbacks from creeks when digging a well. And I know that that led to more conversation where some properties might be restricted, and so we don't want to do that. But at the same time, some people are drawing pretty much directly from a creek, even though they're not drawing with a pipe in the creek. And some of those things could be changed here at the board level. I don't know if Mr. Weatherby wanted to add on to that or not, but those are my comments on ways to try and add more water into the lake and try and add more storage to the water that we have.
And then, just to elaborate, thank you for that background, Supervisor Sabatier. You know, we at the local level here at Water Resources, we are, you know, pursuing projects. If folks are familiar with our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, specifically in our Big Valley Basin, we do have identified priority projects focused on water storage and water availability. One example is, you know, our detention structure that we have on Kelsey Creek that helps with groundwater storage. And another proposed project that has been historically, you know, tried to move forward, but from different obstacles, whether it be funding, environmental compliance, et cetera, is the Adobe Conjunctive Use Project that we are still interested in pursuing. So not only do we have those priority projects, for example, in our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, those are projects that, when I say that we are seeking funding, that we are trying to seek funding and support for. I know we've also tried to pursue funding through the Western Region IRWM, which is another group we participate in at the county level, that we've tried to bring those projects forward, and more than happy, and I'm looking forward to collaborate with the Risk Reduction Authority to get a broader scope of potential storage projects that we are looking at pursuing. But of course, funding, as always, is a big roadblock, so.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close up, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the other directors coming in and giving us the insight and input as well. It's very helpful as we navigate along this timeframe of the drought, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so let's see here.